We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
Pardon, ladies and gentlemen.
Praise the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's 10:02, February 9th. All three county commissioners are here and we made it back from Charleston safely, and we'll move forward to consensus and approval. Morning.
Morning.
We have no exonerations. Minutes for February 2nd, 2022. Vouchers, General County, 296,376.96. 911, $254. Chestnut Ridge Park, 577.79. Camp Muffley, 595.53. Mason Dixon Park, 495.91. Recreation levy, 818.05. Assessors valuation, 2,132.95. Payroll, 1,671,856.40. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 17,591.01. Chestnut Ridge Park, 479.85. Camp Muffley, 593.92. Mason Dixon Park, 947.98. Assessors valuation, 3,041.50. Voucher total of 1,995,761.85. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for February 9th, 2022.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Pardon, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. Do we have any fiduciary orders?
No, sir.
Oh, this is a good day. Introduction to new employees. If we could have Perry Palmer's office first go. Go first.
Good morning. The sheriff seeks the commission's approval on the hiring of Greg Moore as a part-time court security officer. His appointment would be effective tomorrow, February 10th. Greg was a 19-year employee of Mylan.
Oh, really?
We're definitely happy to have him aboard with the commission's approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Pardon, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Is there anyone else? Come on down.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Winata. I would like to introduce Zach Burnath. We stole him from Canal State Forest. He is now going to be the superintendent at Chestnut Ridge Park with your approval. Zach?
Good to meet you.
Good morning, Zach.
Good to see you in person.
Like I said, I'm looking forward to getting started and seeing what progress I can make out there.
That's great. We understand you've already got the grind running and we appreciate it, so.
Trying.
Yes, we're glad to have you here. Actually, we approved this hire last week's meeting, so I'm glad just stopping by and letting the public see our new superintendent, and thank you very much, and we're looking forward to big things out at Chestnut Ridge.
I look forward to being here.
We're very excited. I think we have a great team and looking forward to work together. How big was the area? Just to give you an idea, for the public on the stands, what you did before that you covered?
9,600 acres.
9,600 acres.
Yeah.
And now he's covering 100.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a bit of a damn size.
Just a little bit, but well, hopefully, you know, we look forward to working together. We'll be talking with you, and since that is the park that, I'm sorry, I'm in charge of, so I hope you will still do the job. Now, I can't, I can't wait to see. When will you be moving in? Because I know we still had you at...
I'm technically moved in now.
Oh, okay.
So, we're moving everything else here this weekend.
Oh, this weekend.
Okay, so great.
Great. Well, hopefully, the weather will be nice to do that.
I hope so.
Knock on wood.
Well, congratulations and welcome to the county.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to working with you for a long time.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Thanks, JR.
Take care. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. We have comments from the public. Would anyone like to come on down and speak for three minutes? Four minutes? Five minutes?
You can have 10.
Yeah, we'll give you 10 because right now there's nobody, so. Great. Okay. Closed comments from the public. We don't have any grants, so we move to correspondence.
I only have two items. The first, I think you forwarded to me, it's the Green Bag Road Improvement Project, finding of no significant impact. This was the environmental study?
2,400 pages.
Okay.
Yes.
So, obviously, I don't have all 2,400 pages, but there's that. The second is, this is an order signed by Judge Tucker that allows the Scotts' estate to, I guess they're, she granted the petitioner's motion to continue, so, just so you know that. That's all I have.
Okay. I have one thing. It's a piece of correspondence. This is, went to Mon Pres and County Day at the legislature last week, and this is the legislative citation that they provided us with, and if you approve, I'd like our clerk to read it.
Sure.
I'm not a clerk.
Look.
I'm sorry. I would like our administrator to read it.
Oh, you want me to read all this? Oh, man.
I've got a little bit of a cough this morning, so.
Read the majority. Read the paraphrase.
No, I can't because I haven't read it through. I can't paraphrase it.
It's, it's good stuff.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay. Recognizing the achievements and contributions of Montague County. Whereas Montague County, the mother county in whole or part of 18 West Virginia counties and three southwestern Pennsylvania counties, was founded in 1776 from West Augusta County of Virginia that followed the small settlements along the Monongahela River Valley and its tributaries from the headwaters of the Ohio River. And whereas present-day Montague County, that has been, had been settled by a small group of people along the river valley at the junction of Deckers Creek and the Monongahela River and the tributaries of Dunker Creek and Sheet River, has grown to a present-day population of over 100,000 people. And whereas Montague County, being the third-largest county by population of the 55 counties of West Virginia, has had an annual growth rate exceeding 1.3% for more than a decade. And whereas Montague County is home to West Virginia University, a public land-grant institution founded in 1867 and recognized as a top research university by the Carnegie Foundation for the Advancement of Teaching that welcomes and shapes the minds of students from across the state of West Virginia, every state in the United States, and approximately 100 other nations. And whereas Montague County offers its citizens, students, and visitors from around the world, everything from a beautiful view, from Cooper's Rock to a bicycle ride on the Cape Girardeau Trail, the best in medical care and hospitality, and is the proud home of the NYPL champion West Virginia Black Bears baseball team. And whereas Montague County offers recognized, top-rated education, educational experiences at all levels, from preschool to graduate programs and senior education opportunities. A competitive and innovative business community, a diversified economy that embraces healthcare, education, technology, energy development, and small business entrepreneurship. A nationally acclaimed economic model, it has become known as a place that offers big-city amenities with the neighborly feel of a small-town life. And whereas Montague County has been recognized in recent years in the following ways. The Mon River Rail Trail System was the 2020 Rails to Trails Conservancy Rail Trail Hall of Fame inductee, Top STEM Cities Award, Best Performing Small Metros, Best Small Metros for Business and Careers, Best Quality of Life and Knowledge Worker Metros, Smart Places to Live, Boomtown, Morgantown, Top College Destination, Designated Retirement Community, Best Places to Retire for Under $100 a Day, Most Secure Small Cities, and Best Sports Cities. And whereas in Montague County, Mylan Park is recognized as one of West Virginia's most dynamic venues for users and events of all types, and offers 14 different indoor and outdoor facilities comprising over 60 acres of athletic fields and track facilities and more than 180,000 square foot of indoor sport recreation and event venues, including the Mylan Park Aquatic Center, an impressive state-of-the-art, fully-accessible $90,000, $90,000 square foot facility featuring a 50-meter Olympic pool, diving well, community pool, and water slides. And whereas in Montague County, the Morgantown Area Partnership is a public-private alliance for the betterment of economic, business, and community development in the area that encompasses four entities, including the Morgantown Area Chamber of Commerce, the Montague County Development Authority, the Morgantown Area Economic Partnership, and the Campus Neighborhoods Revitalization Corporation. And whereas the partnership works with other entities and counties in the region to continue to lead the state forward, to become a destination of choice within the mid-Atlantic region and demonstrate how passion and collaboration fueled by one unified vision can ensure prosperity for future generations. Therefore, the achievements and contributions of Montague County and its citizens of the great state of West Virginia are hereby recognized, and it's signed by delegates that represent Montague County.
Thank you. Sorry to spring that on you. I just remembered I had it.
Somebody did the research, and that was impressive. Does anyone else have any correspondence? See any unfinished business?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. New business. Report of technical evaluation reviews conducted on response to RFP 2021 MCC CRP 002 and opening of cost proposals. Of all respondents, has achieved the minimum acceptable score of technical proposals as specified.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion and then I'll explain it. I move to accept technical evaluation committee's determination of the following respondents to RFP 2021 MCC-CRP 001 to provide sledding hill slope grading and rope insulation services. That's the name of the RFP. Having achieved the minimum acceptable score as a result of the technical evaluations that were conducted. Those entities be Anderson Excavating LLC, Blue Gold Development LLC, and WG Land Company LLC.
Second has moved.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there a discussion?
Yeah. The technical evaluations were conducted on the four respondents to the RFP. The technical proposal aspect of the RFP was worth 60 points, and to be considered technically responsive, you have to achieve the minimal acceptable score, which is 70% of the points that are set aside for that. So, respondent had to receive a grade of 42 points, and the three entities that we provided achieved the minimal acceptable score. So, they would then move on to the, they'd be considered technically responsive and move on to the next phase of the procurement process.
Okay. So, we need to, oh, planning to open up the...
I got it. Just, we need to accept this first.
Oh, sorry. So, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, now we've accepted...
Yes, so.
The three now...
Now, I move that given the action above, that we just took, I would also motion that we open the cost proposals so they could be noted as part of the record.
Second.
Pardon, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Each get one.
There may have been some optional items in there, but just be sure to just note the base, the base of... Okay, so I have Anderson Excavating LLC, and their firm fixed-price cost offer is $199,999. They, in order, you would have, look at your envelope.
Yeah, I have WG Land Company LLC, the cost proposal of $253,734.89.
And I have Blue Gold Development. Basic total firm cost offer is $187,432.
I'm sorry, what was yours, Jeff? So, the next step would be that we continue with the evaluation process.
Okay.
Take the cost proposals and evaluate them, make sure that they're in compliance with the RFP, and then come back to commission with a overall recommendation of successful offer.
Do we need a motion on that, or just, we just continue the process and then come back?
Well, we motioned, no, you don't need a motion on that.
Okay.
Did we, did we vote on the?
Yeah.
We agreed. Okay.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Is there any other new business?
Nope.
Okay. At this time, we have reports from elected officials, and just when we were moving quickly, no. We have an update. Dr. Smith, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you for having the opportunity to present. First slide, please. In the past 700 days, the Health Department hasn't always had the brightest or news. So, I wanted to give a rundown of where things are with COVID. So, worldwide, there's almost been 400 million cases. Over the last seven days, there's been 1.2 million, and total deaths is approaching 6 million. Any takers on how many people died in the 1918 Spanish Flu? Going once, going twice, 50 million.
Wow.
So, we're, we're not there. Thank the Lord. So, in the United States, there's been a total, and again, this is over the past 700 days, 76 million. But again, the case rates are still pretty substantial, and the total deaths approaching 900,000. West Virginia, our total numbers is less than 500,000. We continue to have a high community spread. In fact, the entire nation remains red at this time, and total deaths below 6,000. And then in Mon County, focusing down on us, total of 23,230 cases, total cases since the beginning. We still had 632 new cases over the past week, and total deaths, again, over the entire process of 176. And again, in comparison with other counties, that's fairly low, and particularly great numbers given that, for a county of our size. Next slide, please. So, this is a little bit mislabeled because I was cutting and paste, and it's actually, the deaths are not included in this because they couldn't be reported. But if you look at the cases, and we're gonna go over this, this is a map showing the amount of activity for vaccines. So, the darker color, the better. And so, we have had a lot of people that are vaccinated. And so, 64% of our population has at least one vaccine. Fully vaccinated is 57, and up-to-date now is 45. And so, as terms of art, we are moving away from vaccinated and unvaccinated, and you're either fully vaccinated or not fully vaccinated. And up-to-date means you've had fully vaccinated plus a booster, so let's just make it confusing as we can. So, the important thing that we're seeing is the case rate has dropped. Next slide, please. This is the slide that I have shown, audit item, and next slide, please. I think this shows it a little more clearer that the numbers are going down fairly precipitously, almost in the same slope as that they shot up, we're seeing them drop. And so, we were noting that earlier on, that the case rate was going. The highest that we've had here, and these numbers are taking the total, taking it on a seven-day average, and then reducing it to a population of 100,000, so all counties can compare. The highest that we had was 232, and which is, which is a great far cry from 25, which was where you crossed the line into the red. We started seeing that reduce, and so we began meeting to see what mitigation efforts that we could begin to relax or pull back from, and last Friday, we did that thing. Next slide, please. So, this is the zero-to-five-year group, and again, the numbers over on the side are a little bit different. The scale is, but you get the picture that the vulnerable group, the kids that cannot yet be vaccinated, the zero-to-five, all the preschoolers and babies, was up pretty high, almost to 300, and that their numbers are coming down. Next slide, please. So, six to 17, these are our public and parochial school, homeschooled crowd, and their numbers are diminishing quite significantly. Next slide. 18 to 24, young adults, these are the, most of the college kids, that number is going down. Next slide, please. 25 to 34, part of the workforce. Next slide, same thing, 35 to 44. These are the parents of the, of these kids. Next slide, 45 to 54. So, that is sort of is knocking on the door of those that are in the workforce. Next slide. And we're starting to see on the 55 to 64 that it's plateaued a little bit. Next slide. 65 to 74 actually has had get a bit of an uptick, which is a little concerning. We're gonna keep an eye on it. And then above 75, next slide. Yeah, sort of same thing. So, we're seeing great numbers of people vaccinated in this population, and we're just gonna keep our eye on that. Hopefully, these numbers will continue to improve, but we can say pretty assuredly that it looks like that things are going in the better direction than they have in a while. Next slide, please. So, Sean had texted me, and I guess it was, I sprung this on you guys last time, that y'all were not aware that wastewater surveillance is a big deal. And it's, the first part of this year and last year was looking at proof of concept. Can you look at the effluent from sewage and look for the various RNA particles to make determinations? And it is found to be a very sensitive tool. Next slide, please. This slide shows a map of the United States, and while you can't see the colors very well here on this screen, I'll point out that, and these are the only ones that we have in the nation, and so Ohio is pretty well-invested, as is Wisconsin, Missouri, Virginia, and then in West Virginia. But you can see that there's more bright colors in Ohio than there is in West Virginia. Next slide. And so, here's a term of art that you'll need to incorporate for your, for your next cocktail party when you talk about the sewer shed. So, try and say that several times, the sewer shed, sewer shed. And so, we are looking at the wastewater treatment plant in Star City, which has, that particular one has a service area of 48,000 people. Next slide. But actually, we're looking at more because we're looking at individual schools and throughout. So, this is the sewer plant. These are the yellow or the WVU, various dormitories, and then the public schools that we have that we're looking at. Next slide. So, I wanted to talk just a moment about Omicron, and so if you'll remember that November 24th, South Africa and Botswana saw the first couple of cases they were identified as a variant. Two days later, World Health Organization names Omicron as a variant of concern, which is a term that allows additional resources to be put towards identifying it and such. Four days later, November 30th, CDC recognizes that a variant of concern. And then on December 1st, we see the very first case of Omicron in the United States. Now, I will be the first to tell you, the world of public health does not always move at the speed of light. And so, going from December to present with Omicron has, has really tasked us. January 1st, 95% of COVID cases in the United States were Omicron. That's how fast. From December 1st to January 1st, in that one month time, the entire COVID population became Omicron. So, when we say that it is highly infectious, there's the proof in the pudding. Now, in February, we are now looking at the Omicron, it's called BA2, and it's a, the Omicron has four variants. And this is the second kid brother, and it is now termed a variant of interest, which isn't as high as a variant of concern, but CDC and others are looking at it. And I can tell you that we have cases of this variant in the state of West Virginia currently. It's a small number, it's single digits, but it is supposed to be more infectious. The question remains, if it's more infectious, is it going to cause more hospitalizations, more people laid up, et cetera? Next slide, please. So, this is just sort of a graphic that when we talk about these little spike proteins where the virus attaches to cells, the Omicron had 32 different mutations in that spike, which is why your previous immunity did not successfully fight it off. And so, while you were able to get it, even though you were vaccinated, it did have a less of an impact. And then the new variant has 10 mutations, so this is the kid brother. Okay, next slide, please. So, I hear a lot of people making, making their arguments for vaccines, against vaccines. We still feel the vaccines are important, and here's a little bit of proof in the, in the pudding. Now, this is from Aurora Health, which is Michigan, Wisconsin. In that area, they have a bunch of hospitals, Chicago, et cetera. If you look over the last couple of weeks, this is January 5th, 1,500 inpatients. 93% of hospitalized patients were unvaccinated. 94% of patients in ICU were unvaccinated, and of those patients who were on ventilators, 98%. So, I think that it clearly says that vaccines will help prevent serious illness. Next slide, please.
If we could just, this to me is one of the most important slides you've ever shown.
Go back one.
It's really helpful, and that's what I hope, the one which shows the 93% unvaccinated, you know. It clearly shows when people ask, and you're arguing one way or the other, this is scientific fact.
Right.
This is, okay, and I appreciate this.
Yeah. And next slide, it shows, this is a CDC slide, which is a bigger population, and this goes back not just from January, but October, November, December. And we're looking at three populations in people who get COVID. We're not differentiating whether they get hospitalized or not. So, if you're unvaccinated, your chances of getting COVID go up. If you are fully vaccinated but don't have a booster, your chances go up. And if you have a booster, you still are at risk, but the severity is not as bad. So, then they say basically the same type of thing. Your risk of testing positive for unvaccinated, if you're 18 and older, 13 times higher, and you have a risk of dying from COVID, 68 times higher. So, again, you know, so that's a pretty impressive numbers. And I think sometimes that people say, well, show me the studies and something. You just don't pull them out of your pocket the same day. It takes a little bit of time for this to be substantiated. Next slide, please. So, we're also hearing people say, let's just learn to live with it. Well, I will tell you that that's not particularly a good idea. And the CDC has come out clearly, let's don't have chickenpox parties. Let's don't deliberately get infected. And here's the reasons that you should not get COVID. So, the take-home thing is, if you can avoid getting COVID, please do. Because we know that there are a group of people that will become long-haulers. They'll have symptoms for a prolonged period of time, and it can be loss of taste and smell, or shortness of breath, severe fatigue, fever, brain fog. I personally don't need any more than I have. Mood change, asleep difficulties, and it can permanently damage your lungs, hearts, and kidneys. So, it is a potent virus that you really shouldn't take risks with, and if you can avoid it, avoid it. Next slide, please. So, the CDC updated their guidance on December 28th, and these are recommendations for public, meaning that healthcare workers have a different set, long-term care facilities, preschool. All of those have different recommendations. But basically, they took the 10-day isolation... But basically, they took the 10-day isolation and cut it in half, five and five. Five days of isolation remain, but the remaining five days are based upon lack of symptoms, lack of fever, being able to wear a well-fitting mask. And then quarantine now is, is a little bit more confusing. Next slide, please. So currently, what, what we are advocating is a layered prevention strategy to avoid getting COVID. We want people to continue to wear face masks consistently, and those that fit properly, whether it be two-layer cloth, or an N95, or the KN95, or, you know, other things, surgical mask. We haven't forgotten to wash our hands and clean the contact surfaces, watch your distance, limit your amount of time that you're exposed to people, observe isolation, quarantine, follow up with close contacts, and this requires the community to cooperate, so that when you get called from the Health Department, who were you with, actually, you know, respond. And then we continue to do screening and investigate cases, clusters, and outbreaks, and the leading strategy remains the promotion of vaccines. So a lot of people want to do away with masks completely, and that may come, I don't think it's the right time yet, because we haven't even got below 25. Next slide. Many people have seen this slide, the amount of particulate matter that gets released, and if it has infectious material in there, it is now airborne. Next slide, please. This is another CDC slide. This was from a, a study. So for those people who say, show me the study that masks work, here it is. It didn't come out until last week, but this was looking at schools. There's almost 2,000 people in there, it's from February 10th to December 1st. If you wear no mask, then you have no chance of lowering the odds of testing positive. If you wear a cloth mask, and that is one that would have two layers, an inner and outer, then you lower your risk of by 56%. A surgical mask by 66%, and a N95 mask has the 83%. So that's the best that we have. So they do work, and I would suggest also that, next slide, please. This is the influenza slide, and I apologize for looking like spaghetti, but it has, from the year 2016 to present, the amount of flu that we have seen, and we have not seen influenza in the past two years, because people are washing their hands, watching their distance, and wearing masks. And so this 21, 22 is this little purple line, and this was through the holidays, that it wasn't reported, but it's below this dashed line, which is the baseline, because flu is here 12 months out of the year. And when you keep it below that baseline, then you're doing a really good job. And so we're not seeing influenza, which is another, I think, substantial reason that masks are showing an improvement. Next slide, please. Now, let me just say this, that there is a bill that I'm aware of in the legislature that is advocating for removal of masks, and I do not think that we will live our lives with masks on. I think that there will come a time that we can get rid of masks without increasing community infection and causing at-risk populations to suffer. So a lot of people now are quoting this article, which comes out of Johns Hopkins. I actually have read the article, and would invite you to as well. It's kind of interesting. It comes out of the School of Applied Economics, so it's not one that is peer-reviewed, science-based in the terms of being from healthcare. And they did a meta-analysis, meaning that they looked at every published study that had something to do with COVID, and their focal point was purely on mortality. They didn't look at infection rate, they didn't look at hospitalization, they only looked to see if it would impact the overall death rate. Next slide, please. There's a couple of limitations to this study. They only included those that had, as I mentioned, mortality, but they looked at compulsory non-pharmaceutical interventions, which means anything, whether it's a mask, or travel, or restricted movements, those were the studies that they piled all together. And they excluded everything that dealt with total number of cases, hospitalizations, and if your study looked at pre-COVID or in this month and then skipped ahead, then that didn't make the study either. So they said that that was an interrupted time, they didn't want to include that. Next slide. So here's what they found, and I cut and paste this out, so this is not Lee Smith speaking, this is what I took from the article. So shelter-in-place orders reduced COVID mortality by 2.9%. It reduced the mortality. With a range, some studies found it reduced about 40%, others actually did not have a reduction. School closures reduced infection by 4.4. Bar closures reduced infection by almost 15%. Face masks on employees reduced infection by an average of 24%. But again, this is not included in their final thing, because it didn't deal with mortality. But when you add everything together and you focus on the overall death rate, it said that it was only 0.2%. But here's the rub, let's look at how this translates. There's been 5,750,000 deaths, 0.2% is a million, one. If I had something that could reduce deaths by a million, and I didn't move forward with that, I would be really disingenuous. So I think that there's a lot to these studies. I think that it does not weigh in, the economic impact doesn't weigh in, the psychological type of things. I think we will be studying COVID for the next 100 years. I think some of the things that we've done have clearly made a positive impact. There are other things that probably we haven't done a positive impact, but we learn as we go, we're open to ideas, but we are bound by reducing disease, protecting the public, and promoting public health. And so we take that very seriously, and we will continue to relax the mitigation strategies that we have in place as our, our numbers show us. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, but I think it's last slide. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update, Dr. Smith. I did, one, one question, and again, I was spinning back and forth between slides as you were talking about this, but, but recently, the, the school system, and I understand the, the Health Department has relaxed their restrictions as far as recommending the, the 10-day, 10, 14-day treatment of COVID infections. And I, I know that when the CDC did that in December, really caused, because we had two or three different standards, and there was mass confusion, so for now, we're, could you tell us where we're at as far as that standard, and how everybody seems to be consistent?
Sure, and thank you for allowing me to clarify that. On December 28th, when the CDC released their updated guidance, it was awkward, to say the least. Typically, what the CDC does is they release interim guidance, ask for comments, and then publish a final version, that's the traditional format. This was released as a press release, and so it was, well, what does that even mean? The AMA came out against the CDC, which is highly unusual for them to take a, a position, but pointed out that the CDC's own data showed that in isolation, we're talking about those people who are infected, that after five days of infection, 31% remain infected and can infect other people. So allowing people to return to work after five days, cutting isolation from 10 to five days, every third person that you allow back has the potential to infect other people. That gave us pause, and we wanted to chew on that a bit and not make a snap decision. At that time, in latter part of December, our numbers were still shooting through the roof, and unfortunately, there isn't a, a clear playbook on what you're supposed to do in these situations, so trying to apply a, a little bit of common sense, don't change horses in the middle of the stream. These things have worked for us, we looked at our death rate, our infection rate, our percentage of people, our incidence rates, infectivity, all of that, and they were all expanding rapidly. So we said, well, let's just hold the line on this. When the numbers started, we reached our maximum, and they started going down the other way, well, let's reevaluate, and so as it stands, as of last Friday, our recommendation is to follow the CDC, so that we're all on the same, the same page, there isn't, this one does this, and this one does that. There's still a little bit of differences, nuances between daycares and, you know, that kind of thing. The school, public school system has adopted the West Virginia Board of Education, and theirs is a little bit different, because the CDC does not enter into their algorithm, if you will, whether you're vaccinated or not, and the school system does. And so the Board of Education has adopted a policy that if you are exposed, if I have COVID, and you and I are in the same classroom, and then I get sick and test positive for it, and you are vaccinated, then you do not have to, to quarantine, okay? That, that's been an accepted thing. Well, now, the Board of Education is saying that, you know, if you are unvaccinated, or whatever the term of art is, if you're less than, than, you know, 100% vaccinated, that if you continue to mask. But the caveat here is that you have to have universal masking. And so if there comes a time when universal masking is not the standard throughout public school, then I believe that we probably just adopt the CDC format for consistency. But the school board, and they're, you know, in charge of that, we, we work very closely with those folks. The CDC had nothing in there about vaccines status, and so they, they went in that direction, and they also have the, the test to stay, blah, blah, blah. So that's on their purview, that's on their watch. We try and swim in our lane, we try to look at it, all of the, you know, things that, that are impacting things. And again, if the numbers continue to improve, I think this becomes sort of a non-issue. If by the end of February, beginning of March, if our numbers continue to, to drop down, I think then it's certainly, you know, an opportunity for us to look at other mitigating strategies that are in place. The other thing that I think is going to occur this month is Pfizer, who already has a vaccine that goes from five to 17, and then the adult, is going to have, or at least they've applied for emergency use authorization of their pediatric, their baby formula, right? And that, that will be a, yet another dose, and I have heard that it may require three vaccines to, to, to get there. So that's in application, FDA is in the review process, the ACIP is supposed to, to meet sometime after the 15th with a statement as to whether more information is needed, or we're good to go. So I think that we continue to advocate very highly for vaccines, I think that the proof is, is clear, and we'll see what, you know, the, the FDA comes out with, with these kids. But now, if you can vaccinate really from six months to end of life, then I think that that's going to bring the best opportunity for, for control, if you'll let me use that term, of, of, of this virus. Unfortunately, it continues to mutate pretty quickly, and the only thing that we've learned so far, I should say the only thing, one of the, the most important lessons that we've learned so far is that immunization antibodies have a time limit to them, and it, it rapidly mutates, and our antibodies don't keep up. And so we'll, we'll learn more as we go. Did that help answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, I wanted to thank you, this is the first time I've seen a report like this that was, that were a third grader could understand this. It's black and white, I can see the illustrations, they make perfect sense to me, and I feel comfortable to share them.
Well, I appreciate that, because I know you guys were in a lot of conversations, and getting, you know, everybody armed with the same information, I think is incredibly important.
I also want to thank you, but I also appreciate bringing up about the concern of possible long-term effects. I have a number of friends between ages of 25 and 35 who said, oh, it was just like the flu four weeks ago. Now they're saying they still don't have the energy level.
Right.
And that they've had to go see doctors, several of them, because their lungs are not at 100%, but they didn't realize it four weeks ago, because the symptoms weren't bad, but it's just maintained.
Yeah.
It's been going on longer, and that's the fear that, I'm, I'm very worried about the people thinking it's only a, a mild flu, without realizing the possible long-term effects.
Right.
And you finally are, I mean, we're able to start really showing that now, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, and we'll know more as, as time goes on, as to what really truly long-term things are.
Right.
You know, we're, we're into this, 700 days went by pretty, pretty quickly, and so, you know, I wish we knew more, but I think this is a state-of-the-art to where we are.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And again, I think the biggest thing is personal responsibility, as you're talking about these different measures, you know, everybody kind of has their own process as far as how they deal with this, but in the end, it really comes down to each, each individual, each family.
Right.
Taking personal responsibility to take care of their family, take care of their coworkers, take care of their fellow, fellow people. And I am, this is Commissioner Bloom said, I am happy to hear, obviously, there's, this thing's going to be studied for years.
Yeah.
That, but people do need to look at, you know, the other effects, the effects on, you know, the socialization of the kids, the effect on workplace. I mean, we, in, in my other workplace, we have reported a couple suicides due to the isolation of people not being able to, you know, gather at work for a normal day. So there's, there's a bunch of sides to this, and you guys are in the middle trying to weigh all of those, and I do appreciate it. I, I don't envy the job that you, that you have, but I do, I think we have the best group of individuals in the state to actually deal with it and look at it from all sides, because I know that, you know, you're, you get, you get beat on from each side, and you're just, you've been pretty consistent as far as trying to have a logical, practical, pragmatic approach to this whole thing, so I really do greatly appreciate it.
Well, I don't have to tell people who work in the world of politics that when you're getting beat from both sides, you're probably somewhere near the middle.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Smith.
Any other elected officials? See any reports from County Commissioner Sean?
This has been a busy travel week. I was in Charleston a couple, a couple times this past week, so I'm glad to be back in Mon County and no scheduled trips for a while. After our meeting last Wednesday, I attended Mon-Preston County Day, so I went down to Charleston, we had a reception that night, and then the next day, we went over to the Capitol, and that's where we had the citation and got to meet with Secretary Carmichael's. Again, had a good conversation with him about our broadband efforts, and just overall, it was a, it was a good trip. Friday, we had staff reports, and then I had a broadband check-in with our consultants. Sunday was off to the West Virginia Association of Counties Conference, and we were down there Sunday through Monday. I was still able to get other work in while I was down there. Tuesday, I had, yesterday morning, I had a Juma meeting in the morning. Today's a regular day, this is the second, second week, Thursday of the month, which is a, a day that's just about as bad as Commission Day. I have a partnership executive committee meeting tomorrow, red team meeting, Development Authority meeting, and then in the evening, I have Mon County Extension Services Committee meeting. Friday, I have a early meeting, early morning coffee with MVB President and personal friend Don Robinson. He wants to update me on the baseball tournament this year that they're planning, and then we had staff reports. So that's- So that's pretty much it. Again, thanks to Dr. Smith and his staff for the report, and that's all.
Just, we had a, as Sean said, we had a very informative discussion at the WBAC meetings. And one thing that came across to me is there's a lot of legislation being proposed right now by your delegates and by your senators. I just asked the general community, when you hear about these things, inquire about them. Now's the time to voice your concerns, or your approvals or disapprovals of certain bills being proposed. Once they get enacted, it's kind of too late. So any civic involvement in that is greatly appreciated, I'm sure, by them, or maybe not, I'm not sure. But now's the time to have your voice be heard before they're enacted into law.
Yes, as you said, all three of us went to the WBACO, and I think you know there's concern when you have a late afternoon meeting, and it's wall-to-wall individuals learning more about the amendment that's on, that's coming up in November. So I think we're going to hear a lot more about that, a lot more information, and there's a lot of concern. And we think that the public needs to be very aware of what they're voting on. So with that, as for move to?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Ooh, second, we be gone.